Thank you. Sorry. Thank you for joining us tonight. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the bow of the United States of America and to the great God which stands one nation under God indivisible, free and just as one.
We have, well, Happy New Year, everybody, and hopefully tonight's meeting will be brisk.
Just like the weather.
The source out. Anyway, all right. Comments from the community. Anybody want to address the school committee tonight? Okay, seeing none. Comments from the student representatives. I see we have one, right?
Yeah. In December, we had joint concerts at South for both instrumental and choral with our South Middle School. They were great events and enjoyed by all. Our sports teams are off to a great start. The schedules are updated regularly on the new MIAA app. We encourage you to download this app to get up-to-the-minute scores and any game changes. Saturday night, we hosted our annual North-South Basketball Day, and it was standing room only. The varsity team split with a win for the South boys and a win for the North girls. We are beginning scheduling for next year. The eighth-grade academic orientation for parents is Tuesday, January 26th at South. This is also the same night as the Tech Expo, which is at 5:00 PM in the gym for any students interested in joining the Tech. Students in grades seven and eight will also be invited over during the day on the 26th. Marketing students will be traveling to the Boston Marriott and Quincy for the District One DECA competition on Thursday and Friday. Good luck to them. The National Honor Society induction is Thursday, January 28th. Invitations will be out to families and guests shortly. The winter sports captain's lunch is on January 14th, and the next VPA Coffee House is this Friday night. During the holiday season, many of our athletic teams, programs, and the school itself participated in an Adopt a Child program and many other worthy causes to help those who are less fortunate during the holiday season. Student Council will be holding the Penny for Your Thoughts fundraiser from January 22nd to 28th. Thoughts will be distributed on January 29th, which is National Compliment Day. And midterms are already beginning on January 15th, which is hard to believe, and the term ends on January 22nd, and the second semester officially begins on January 25th.
Very good. Thank you. We don't have North tonight, or are they coming late? Okay. Nobody knows. Okay. Old business. Anybody have any updates for old business? I have my letters going out. Dr. Gould's giving me the correct contact. Anything else? New business. Everybody's quiet tonight. No new business. Okay. Dr. Gould, I think we're just gonna get out earlier than we thought here. Superintendent's report. Dr. Campbell.
It's all right. Thank you, Mr. Begley. Just for those who aren't here, Dr. Myssis is currently at a planning board meeting, so I'll be speaking on his behalf tonight regarding the superintendent's report. Just a reminder, I think, that the weather today gets us to think about, you know, inclement conditions and possible school cancellations in the future, which we hope we don't have to deal with like we did last year. But just a reminder that for snow day, delays and no school notifications. Dr. Myssis recently actually did a video, which was sent out via Twitter, which will be up on our website as well, in terms of the decision-making process and how those decisions are made, and all the information and people that are consulted for that. But just for more immediate information, Dr. Myssis would like to inform the general public that we use the following outlets to announce our delays or no-school information: WCB-TV Boston, Channel 5; Fox 25 News, Channel 7; WHDH; WBZ; NECN; QRC; WATD; WPLM; and also the district's website, Twitter, and Facebook accounts. So I didn't count that out, but there's like a dozen.
Everything available.
Excuse me?
Everything available.
Yeah, other than smoke signals.
Yeah.
Right? So, you know, it's pretty hard not to know what's happening in the district regarding delays or no-school notifications, so, and this information's also on our district calendar as well that gets sent out to the families. So just a reminder, hopefully we don't have to notify anyone of anything this year, but we wanted to get that information out to you. Also a reminder that tomorrow night, we're scheduled to be at the Board of Selectance Meeting for the joint meeting to complete the town budget. The meeting is in the Mayflower Room at Town Hall and will begin at 7:00 PM. And lastly, just Happy New Year to everyone. Hope you all had a wonderful holiday with your family and friends, and just to wish a Happy New Year to the student, staff, and faculty at Plymouth Schools, too. And we're very excited about what 2016 will bring, and just realized that we're four short years away from 2020. So it's creeping up on us, so.
Very good.
That's all we have for tonight.
Very good. Do we want to talk about the sign, or?
Sure.
The reason why Dr. Myssis is at the planning board is there is a discussion occurring around the entrance sign at South High. So he's there to represent us. I think everybody got the maps today, and you can see where the current sign is down toward, at the entrance of Long Pond Road, but the new sign's gonna be way up at the intersection, if you can see it. So it's well within the, you know, the campus grounds, if you will, rather than down towards any residential houses. So there's a discussion around maybe the bylaw needs to be changed. If you remember when we did the digital sign at North, the bylaw was limited to just North High, so that's the discussion that he's involved with tonight.
Right, so I don't know if you can see from, as Mr. Begley just pointed out, if you can see Long Pond Road on the bottom there. It's actually, the proposed footprint for the new sign is actually 366 feet away from Long Pond Road. So it's, it's a good, it's in a good spot in terms of people that are accessing the campus, but I also think that it certainly isn't an obstruction or visual distraction from the road by any means, so.
Right. And the lights would be on there anyway. So far in.
Correct.
That would be lit anyway, that area.
That whole area would be lit, exactly.
The sign's not gonna add to the lighting. Dr. Sorenson?
I just want to point out to the committee what I told the building committee a couple of months ago when we were discussing the sign, that when the Plymouth North sign was being proposed and developed, PCIS was trying to develop their sign at the same time, and as you may or may not know, they got a decline while Plymouth North got accepted. And now it'll happen again, perhaps, that Plymouth South gets accepted, and Plymouth and PCIS ends up with a non-digital sign. I just think, I just think there's a level of inequality here that we have to be aware of, because PCIS feels as important about their need for a sign as the high schools do, but yet they got rejected.
There was a difference, though.
Go ahead.
So back then, what happened was we were trying to get all the schools to have updated signs at the same time. The reason why North was approved was because North came in under the package agreement with the state, so the reimbursement for the sign was included in the package, whereas the other signs would have been the cost of the taxpayers, and town meeting didn't want to go there.
I think Plymouth, PCIS funded their own sign.
Oh, they funded their own sign? Back then?
I think so. I can look into that, but I think they did.
I don't recall that, but, but that's, so that, anyway, that was the, that's how it became just North. Originally, it was they wanted to stop all the.
My point, it's another issue. It's the same issue coming up again.
Yes. So that's where he is tonight. So he'll let us know. He might make it before the end of the meeting.
Will there still be that sign at the, at Long Pond, but just not digitized?
Without having the plans in front of me, I believe that there is a stone sign.
Yeah.
The stone structure, as we also have at the North Campus and also at South Middle School, so there will be, that sign will be out there on the main area, too, so that you will know where the entrance is. Yeah, there'll definitely be an entrance sign.
For someone to look at the school to not be.
Yes.
Right. But not the big sign that's there now.
Correct.
That'll be gone, and that's, this'll replace that.
Correct. The display board will not be there.
With that stone one over the side.
You know, pending approval. My understanding, Mrs. Darg, you may be able to correct my memory if I'm wrong, but I think that Dr. Myssis felt that it would be helpful if the school committee supported this as well.
So if we have a motion, I would accept the motion that sought to support the placement of the sign where the architects have laid out on this map. Ms. Badger?
I'll move that.
Seconded by Mrs. Burgess. All those in favor? Anonymous. Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Correspondence?
There are no pieces of correspondence.
Very good. School improvement plans. Tonight, we have West Elementary to update. Come on.
Yep, so tonight, we have Mr. Williams.
All holding their breath. Come on, come on. Before you, before you guys get started, I want to say upfront at the beginning of the introductions that I went through your attachment that you gave us in the packets. I have to say, the template, I'm a fan of that template already. That was one of the best laid out. I don't know how everybody else feels, but as far as being able to read what the initiative is, what the current status, you know, what the goals are and everything, perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Begley. I have to give credit to Mr. Young. Andy worked very hard on that presentation for us tonight, so thank you, Mr. Young.
Very good. In fact, if we can use it as a template and maybe circulate it to everybody?
Nominal fee, but you.
Copyrighted.
So thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for having us this evening. We are very pleased and proud to present to you our school improvement plan for West Elementary. I'm very proud of the work that we've done over the past three years during my tenure at West as the principal, particularly proud, especially proud this year because, and we will get into our four goals and we'll break those out for you, but I have to say, and in all, I'm very, very excited because we did get our Blue Ribbon accolade and the achievement of that, and that was truly a collaborative community effort, outreach and beyond the walls of West, and included our parent group, our PTA, very involved, and the students, most importantly, the students. So I'm very pleased and honored that we were awarded that distinction this year.
Very good. Congratulations.
That's our capstone for the past year. Please allow me to introduce my colleagues. We have Kristi Maloney. We have Mrs. Lisa Kershadi, and Mr. Young and myself. Several of our school council members this evening had unforeseen conflicts, whether children, some emergencies came up, so I have lower attendance this year, but please understand, we are excited to present to you the plan. So without further delay, I'm gonna start with goal one. Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. So we will certainly try to keep this brisk for you. Our first goal is to increase the academic achievement of all students, and when you look at that goal, I think the two most important words in that goal are "all students." And the reason I say that is because what we hope you will see in looking at our, the various initiatives that we have and that we've created for our school, is that we're not only preparing our students to be successful on park or MCAS exams, but we're trying to instill lifelong skills that children will leave West with, and we're delivering those in a variety of methods, and we're actually measuring the success of those using a variety of measures. And we're hoping that all students achieve success within their current grade levels, but also after they have left West show success. So how have we done so far in the three years that we've used these goals? Some of the initiatives, if you want to go back just one second, Mr. Williams. So we have 16 initiatives underneath this specific goal, so I'm just going to review a few of those that really kind of stand out. We've met most of our goals, as you can see from that right column, the current status, but there are a few that we still have work to be done. The first one is looking at other schools, and that's really studying how other schools have performed and how they've reached that high-level status. We've collaborated with a number of schools. We have Abington School coming into our school and actually learning from us, but through the Blue Ribbon Survey and another of initiatives, we've actually done a lot of collaboration with other schools, so we've tried to learn from them. The second initiative we have is looking at at-risk students as well as some of our top performers and learning how we can actually help them meet their needs a little bit better. So we do that through, this year, we're a Title I school, so we receive additional support for some of our ask-at-risk students. We do a number of pre-assessments, including benchmark studies, QRI, some of the EDM, beginning-of-year assessments, as long, as well as Words Their Way. So a number of pre-assessments as well as assessments throughout the year. Mr. Williams can attest, it takes a long time for SMART goals. All of the staff at West have developed their SMART goals this year. Mr. Williams, as well as Ms. Perry, have done a really nice job of evaluating each of the teachers and working with them to develop those SMART goals and making sure that they're aligned to not only the school improvement plan, but also the overall goals of the district. We're in our third year utilizing Plymouth South tutors, so those students come in each week and they work with our students, so that's another way we are trying to reach different students. And then at the bottom of that, the last goal on this particular page or initiative on this page, is thinking about how we can provide a number of different delivery methods and instructional strategies, and we do that through RTI. RTI has been a really key initiative that Mr. Williams has brought to our school that we've worked on for the past three years, and we feel that after three years of development, we've really gotten to the point where we're very solid in our practices with RTI, and that's done on a weekly basis. Every grade is doing that. That's done daily, sometimes multiple times during the week within our classrooms at each grade level. And then as we go on to the next page, we have an additional seven initiatives. Ms. Maloney will talk a lot about the technology, so I don't want to step on her toes there, but the second one is talking about the workshop models, and that's really taking, it's looking at the delivery methods as opposed to the curriculum that's being taught. So it's a way of breaking the kids into different groups, and we've utilized that at all different grade levels across reading, across math, and across writing. The third one on there is the Continuum of Literacy. It was a tool that was given to us. Really provides a roadmap for students to understand at different grade levels and at different reading levels, where, what skills do they have, and where do they need to go to develop to that next particular level? So we're using that very closely in our classrooms. The data wall was something that we did not meet. We originally put that on the plan three years ago. It was something that we didn't feel as though it was, it wasn't necessitated at the point over the last three years, but it is something that we're still putting on our radar for the next few years. And the last few I want to touch upon are specifically the different literacy instruction tools that we use and strategies we use at our, in our classrooms. LLI and Reading Recovery are two different programs that we're using, as well as Wilson Reading. We have a number of teachers that are now trained in Wilson Reading, so we use those in conjunction with Lauren Hamilton and Laura McBride, as well as some online tools such as Lexia Reading. And then finally, our before-school enrichment programs. We have a number of different academic programs that really help our kids and enrich our students, and the different variety of learning that they can do within our school. This year, we've launched a French Club. We also have a math club that provides a number of different opportunities for students to practice different math games. We have a news program this year that we've launched, the band and orchestra, chorus, circles that we do, the online literature circles, and then finally, our robotics program. And in addition to those, we also have a number of ongoing or future initiatives that we've been using. So again, we have another, a number of tech initiatives that Ms. Maloney, I said, will talk to, the robotics program. And then in order to make sure that students are being successful, the staff at West has to also continue to learn. So we do that through a number of trainings, such as working with literacy consultants for half-day programs. We have grade-level collaborations that's done through PLCs, so those PLCs are also something that Mr. Williams has brought into, into West Elementary, and that's something that we meet as a grade-level team every other week, and we talk about the needs of the specific children, look at specific data points, and how we can improve the academic success of children as well. And now I'll pass it on to Ms. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I'm gonna focus on goal number two, which is increasing the availability and use of technology throughout West Elementary School by purchasing additional resources and providing ongoing training opportunities to support these resources. West Elementary has actually been very fortunate because we do have the availability of technology throughout the building. We broke this into three different initiatives. The first one is the hardware initiative. We were able to install interactive whiteboards in the classroom 100% by July 2015. We were also able to install Ladybug document cameras and projectors in the classroom. Those were 100% installed, and that was met by January 2015, and those are used on a daily basis. One of the initiatives was to purchase an additional five iPads. We were actually able to purchase an additional 18, which now puts us at a total of 30, so we have a classroom set of iPads available. As far as software initiatives, excuse me, reading A to Z literacy, we're able to currently use that across all classrooms. We do have a subscription to that. Extra math software is used across grades three through five. Install Storia on all iPads. Unfortunately, with the Storia, it's not working on the iPads as an app, so the kids are now using it on the computers themselves instead of the iPads. So those goals have all been met this year, which I think is wonderful. If we go on to professional development initiatives, Lauren Fitzgerald and Julie Boucher do training bi-weekly for us. So we have Metecko, and we do have three Chrome cards available, and Julie Boucher also delivers training on those for keyboarding, so the kids use that in preparation for park, and also they are able to sign out the card on a daily basis to use for writer's workshop, reading workshop, whatever is necessary. Some other additional incentives that we have is create memorial lesson plans. We've only somewhat met that. We use Google Drive to collaborate across the grade levels, and we're actually able, by using Google Drive, we're actually able to collaborate across the district, so that's very helpful. Again, we were able to purchase additional iPads to use. We do provide staff with literacy and math websites that they can use, and those working list is also available on Ms. Boucher's website. We have created several before-and-after clubs. We do have Ed TV coming in to do a broadcasting club for us. Unfortunately, we don't have a direct technology club right now, just because there are no volunteers to run it. And we do have several instructional technology websites that the students do use, and they are addressed bi-monthly in the staff workshops. Thank you. Kershadi? Is it you or Mr. Williams? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. So I'll be addressing goal number three, broken down as follows. One of our goals was to increase our literacy support, specifically with our response to intervention model and our PLC model. We have engaged working under the leadership and working, collaborating with Dr. White. The feet on the street at West are Mrs. Devine, Mrs. McBride, and Natalie LaCroix-White. She's an elementary liaison with our literacy department. They have been phenomenally helpful in helping our children, particularly with our response to intervention model. Increased mathematics support. Just today, Jen Marciani was present at our school. Jen is the elementary math coordinator. She supports mathematics across the district for elementary math, and she's been very present as well at our grade-level PLCs. We will be hosting a math night this year. Last year, it was March 4th. This year will be February 25th. Jen has been instrumental in getting that off the ground for us. So we're pleased with those academic achievements. Mr. Young touched upon RTI, response to intervention. So we actually went deeper this year with RTI. I'm sorry, it was last year. Now, each grade level, at every grade, they are meeting once or twice a week and having specific interventions with children. We have parental support and permission to engage that process with our students, and the model has proven to be very successful. Physical relocation of teams in closer proximity. So one of the changes I made to the blueprint of West my first year was to reassign classrooms, and it was much to the chagrin of our custodial staff, but now grade levels are together. I think close proximity promotes collaboration and consistency of deployment of curriculum, so I'm very pleased that that's been met. Lunches have been, excuse me, I'm fighting a cold. Sorry. Lunches reconfigured, so grade levels are eating together. Again, that has been achieved. Professional development opportunities. Guest speakers from outside Plymouth Public Schools. This is an area we could work on. We had an initial goal of having, inviting outside folks to come speak to the staff at West. That has happened, but not as much as we had hoped, so that is something we can address moving forward. Staff members definitely present to each other during PD time at West, as well as in staff meetings. So I think teachers learn best from other teachers, particularly in their own building. So that has definitely been achieved at West School. Curriculum specialists present at staff meetings. Again, engaging with our curriculum folks, Dr. White, Alison Riordan, our science coordinator, Kathy Bambini, social studies, they've all had a presence at West School and speaking at our staff meetings. We welcome them always. Grade-level team-building exercises during staff meetings. I can't say that we have specific team-building exercises, but we did start some new programs this year at West. We formed a rewards and recognition committee. One of the byproducts of the Blue Ribbon Survey was staff felt that they wanted to be more recognized, and so I'm a reflective leader, and I thought that that was very important. So a bunch of us got together, and now we recognize staff at our staff meetings once a month. We have employee parking rock star of the week. So we just, I just identify folks at West, and that's open to all staff, not just teachers. Folks that go above and beyond, something that they really, really worked hard on for that week. So again, praise is very much appreciated, I believe. Continuing our Westie branding, new art murals in the gym. We did hire a muralist who, part of the PBS, PBIS initiative, Teachers 21, was to have a solid brand, a mascot, so to speak. And so we selected to be the Westies, and we have three murals at West plus a painting. An artist came, our PTA-sponsored enrichment program, and an artist came and did a Westie mural. If you ever visit West, you will see that mural on display as you enter our cafeteria. We have a Westie dog near the music room. We have a Westie dog near the gym, so that has been very successful. Our Westie Hall of Fame was an idea that actually Mr. Young had. We are somewhat successful in achieving that. We have a television monitor on display in our lobby, which displays our daily agenda, our word of the day, cafeteria menu, but in those, in that slideshow, we have captured many relevant recent pictures capturing kids at West in action, so that's been well-received by parents and students. Making better choices with logical consequences, this is something that happens when a child comes to my office for a disciplinary situation. We have a reflective conversation, a dialogue. The goal is to equip the children with long-term skills so they can self-regulate, and it's our job as educators to help them with that endeavor. So I always talk about, we focus on the behavior and not the child, because we want long-term success. We always engage the parents. Mom and dad have a right to know what happens during the school day, and then we try our best to circle back to the classroom teacher, so the teacher, if the child can see that the principal, the teacher, and the parents are on the same page, I think it yields greater success. So that's been a program that we've continued. Our Respect, Responsibility, Kindness campaign. We have our monthly Westie Awards program. Mr. Young is instrumental in getting that program off the ground at West. And basically what that is, acknowledges students every month that exemplify and personify those tenants. Respect, responsibility, kindness, and compassion. Universal consistent language, bus-to-home specials, cafeteria. So again, part of the PBIS initiative was consistent language across the day of a student, so the expected behaviors are the same. Mr. Young was very creative with the staff, and we put together some vignette videos. They are silly, but humor is a great hook, if appropriate, for a child, and so we have our staff members showing what not to do in a bus and then what to do in a bus. Is that the next one, bus behavior? We did, we've done safe bathroom behavior. We've done cafeteria expected behavior. I have to say, the student, I'm at the Westie Awards. I attend every month, and they do get a kick out of the videos, but the message is clear. This is what we expect at West. This is how we're good citizens at West. at West. Um, this is how we're good citizens at West. I, I mentioned our television in the lobby that's been installed. Our Second Steps Social Competency Program. Um, so we have an adjustment counselor in our care program, Chris Curran. He actively, uh, has a roadshow. He goes out into the general ed population and actually goes over the Second Steps Social Competency Program. A lot of role plays for kids. It's very dynamic and engaging. Uh, peaceful bus program is something that we really have not utilized at West. Um, I guess it's a good thing, because we haven't had significant bus issues. Um, occasionally, we will have a situation with a bus slip, um, and it's the same protocols that we follow for Making Better Choices. Um, but we've kind of gotten away from that program because we haven't felt the need for it. Um, a zero tolerance bullying policy. We've had lots of anti-bullying assemblies, and again, the Second Steps competency program reinforces, uh, that, that we do not tolerate bullies at West School. Further branding with our Westies t-shirts, again, sport gear. I also have to acknowledge and thank our PTA, because without them, many of these initiatives could not have been achieved. And then just quickly, just to capture, these are ongoing, um, initiatives that we're taking at West. Diversity events is part of our Read-a-Thon, healthy eating breakfast, Fuel Up to Play 60. Again, that's a PTA initiative, practicing safety procedures, um, field trips, virtual field trips, and then our Read Across America Challenge. And without further delay, I will hand it off to my good friend and colleague, Mrs. Kraschati, who will round it out with goal four.
Hi, everyone, and Happy New Year. Um, last but not least, we have our fourth goal, which is to increase staff, family, and community engagement at West. Uh, for the staff initiatives, uh, Mr. Williams does send out a West Weekly Newsletter. He sends it via email to all staff, teachers, parents, everyone in the building gets this. We also, um, hold social events like spirit days. Um, staff can wear their Westie gear. We support, or support our local team, or you are allowed to wear jeans with a donation to a local charity. Um, we do monthly breakfasts, and we do hold a holiday luncheon for staff in an appreciation. We do cross-grade level activities like Big Buddy, Little Buddy, book partners, and publishing parties. So, um, higher grades usually get together with low, lower grades, and the children get together, and we also have, um, added a mentoring program this year, which is very successful. For student and family initiatives, um, we have our monthly West Way Newsletter. That's more of a paper newsletter. It gets sent home, um, with children. Um, it is also added to our West blog, so it can be read online. We do have school events like first grade gardening, Field Day. We have appreciation breakfast for all the parent volunteers that come and help us with our day-to-day tasks at West. Um, we also hold an art exhibit at the end of the year showcasing the awesome artists at West Elementary. Um, that goal has been met. These are all regularly planned, um, events. We've also added a curriculum night, and the fifth grade gym show has become quite a success. For outside events, um, our year is always kicked off with an ice cream social. Um, staff has been encouraged to join students in August, um, so they are able to meet new students to our school. We do restaurant nights where staff will go and serve families. Uh, pajama night is very successful. We have a movie night outdoors. Uh, we have several enrichment days, art programs, um, as you, I'm not going to read all of these, but we also have many more we haven't mentioned in that paragraph because I didn't have enough room. This goal is obviously met. These are all regularly planned thing, things that we have also added, a heart healthy day, a turkey trot, and town council meeting. Uh, for general community, community initiatives, we do have a craft fair that's held every November. We do tutoring partnership program with Plymouth South High School. This is done weekly. We've also tried to engage, um, we encourage Plymouth North and Plymouth South, but I know the scheduling is very difficult this year. It has been a challenge to try and get tutors to the school, but, um, our students love it, and I believe these, the, the tutors love it as well. It's good for them as well. Um, we do have additional programs. The Wahlberg Youth Foundation donated a basketball court at West. We also have celebrity readers come in and read to our students, and the high school athletes, uh, come in and read, and cheerleaders and dance team come in and read to our students. And then, ongoing, uh, or future initiatives, we do have a kindergarten play. We offer a West Talent Show, which is open to children in grades K through five. The gym show, which I mentioned, the Field Day is very successful at the end of the year. Our book fair is held. It's actually coming up pretty soon. Um, expanding volunteer opportunities, additional events and celebrations for staff and family interaction, continued tracking of participation levels of families and fundraising efforts. We have tried to encourage a lot of parent volunteers. We even offer babysitting services for any parents who want to join the PTA. So, that's it.
And that concludes our presentation this evening. Um, thank you very much for your continued support. Um, we'll certainly engage any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions or comments? It was an excellent job. Excellent. Very, very good.
Thank you. I have to give the credit to my colleagues. They came out on a snowy cold night, so.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have now, uh, home education plans. Homeschool planning approval, Dr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Begley. Um, tonight we have three homeschool plans that have been reviewed and meet the criteria, um, according to our school committee policy, and abrupt before you for approval.
Do I hear a motion, Ms. Badger?
I move to approve the home education plan that's presented.
Mrs. Betts seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. Reports. First one up is the fundraising activities. Um, anybody have any updates, Ms. Badger?
I was just looking over some of the dates at the end, and I just would, just do a quick look-through, because some of them are like six, 12, 2015, just so that, I, I mean, I'm assuming they're not carried over that far, but, um, and then, um, I think that a number of them were like that. And then, yeah, it was like probably three or four. I started to write them down, and then just, just a quick look-through.
Can you give me a page number that you see?
Um, there was one, I know that the Plymouth North softball date, I don't know what.
No page number is?
Page, uh, I know there's one four down, like four down on the first page. There's one that said 15 on the end, but there's a number of them. I was going to start listing them, and then I tried to print it, and I apparently don't have any ink in my printer. I'm sorry.
Been there.
So just like a search.
Yeah, we'll check, we'll, my apologies for that. We'll, we'll check that.
Thank you.
Anything else concerning fundraising? Then, um, any reports and proposals from committee members? Quiet holidays. Okay. And the building committee, did they meet?
They didn't meet.
They didn't meet? One fourteen. Schedule bills, the account payable warrant. Ms. Badger?
All right, here we go. Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost and or transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S01-0716 dated January 7th, 2016 in the amount of $385,517.68 as presented.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mrs. Betts seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. Now we have the minutes from October 19th. Anybody have any feedback on the minutes? Yep, Mr. Morgan?
I was just going to move to approve the minutes.
And seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous with one abstention. Oh, wow. Okay. We're there.
That's crazy.
So. Four guys get a come, we'll be all gone.
Mr. Clausen, let him know.
So without objection, then, we're adjourned at, um, 7:40. Oh, wait, oh, and tomorrow, uh, tomorrow night, how many people? I would say it's seven o'clock. We're not going to be, you know, but why cut it close? So, seven o'clock? Or get, yeah, get early to get seats. They, usually they'll just have you in the front row, and it'll just be Gary and I will be up at the table, so they can't fit us all.
I should have asked this before, but did we decide on a date for the retreat? Are we keeping it where it was, or are we moving it?
Uh, we're keeping it where it was.
Nope, the first Saturday of February, which is the sixth or something like that?
I think it was the sixth. Right, Mrs. Dargy? The sixth.
Okay, just wanted to check.
It is, the sixth is the first Saturday in February. Yes, correct. Yes.
Very good. So then, without objection, we're really adjourned this time.